Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. This is Thursday, June 9th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to now call the meeting to order, and our first order of business would be to say, pledge allegiance to the flag if everyone would rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would Secretary Take the role, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg. Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, would you take the role?
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next item is approval of the minutes from regular meeting of May 12th, 2022.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that one, too.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any comments or corrections? None, take your role, please.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Okay, next, we have public comments on non-agenda items only. If there is someone in the audience who would like to make a comment on an item that's not on the agenda, this would be your chance to approach podium and do that. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the first business item. This is PPL 22-0010, request for rezoning of a vacant lot at the northeast corner of Arcola Avenue and Cherry Hill Road, from C1 local business and C3 general business to R3 multiple-family residential. And we're having a public hearing on this tonight. We can start out with the, our consultant's report, if you would, Mr. Ortega.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're here to consider this proposed rezoning. So the site is an unimproved 0.41 acre lot, and it's a vacant lot currently. The southwest corner of the lot is zoned C1 local business. The southeast corner of the lot is zoned C3 general business, they're both fronting on Cherry Hill. The remaining northern 110 feet of this lot is actually zoned R3 multiple-family residential. So the applicant is proposing to rezone the southern portion of the lot from the existing C1 and C3 district to the R3, resulting in the entire property being available and zoned for multiple-family residential. So you have my review letter, I'm just going to point out some highlights from that. When we consider rezonings, after looking at the existing conditions, zoning, existing zoning and future land use, the first issue we look at is whether to see if this rezoning would meet the intent of the zoning ordinance. In order to meet the intent, usually the most applicable consideration is whether this rezoning would effectively regu-, would meet the intent of the zoning ordinance, which is, the zoning intent is to acti-, effectively regulate and promote the compatible use of land throughout the city. So it's always focused on trying to make sure uses are compatible with each other. As I mentioned, the lot currently has multiple zoning designations, which appear, it appears to me to possibly reflect previous commercial lots may have existed on the site, fronting on Cherry Hill. If those lots did exist previously, then they must have been combined to create the current larger 0.41 acre lot. However, when the lot combination was made, it appears that the site was not rezoned to promote a single use, the multiple designations were remaining on the site. But in effect, so in effect, the requested rezoning would make the entire property viable for one type of development, in this case, multiple-family development. Getting back to the issue of compatibility, multiple-family residential uses are, that are located adjacent to commercial uses, it is an appropriate land development policy. It's a standard transitional zoning policy to go from a high-intensity use such as a commercial use that generates traffic, our activity on the site, to a multiple-family use, which is, generates some traffic but not as much, and then transitioning to a single-family use, which generates a low level of activity. So that type of designation, we do think would help match the intensity of the existing commercial properties to the east and west, and also south, on the south side of Cherry Hill. So the intensity of the multiple-family development, we do believe would be compatible with the certain types of commercial development in the area. And so as a result, we do believe the proposed rezoning would meet the intent of the zoning ordinance. One other important aspect to consider with the rezoning is the master plan for the city. Within the, within the city's master plan, we look at making sure that we meet the comprehensive planning goals of the plan. Within, in, within our previous master plan update, one of the more important goals, residents actually indicated, was that the issue needing the most improvement in the city was the quality of the housing in the city, including blight reduction, home improvements, and the provision of a higher-quality residential opportunities for everyone. So we believe the rezoning would allow the entire site to be vetted, developed for a comprehensive multiple-family development. That would, this would create a new housing alternative for residents, you know, it would be built to current code requirements with modern standards, and a new high-quality housing alternative would further the planning goals of the city, as outlined in the, in the master plan's goals. One other thing you take a look at is the future land use, and the site is designated as flexible residential. That's their other category within the master plan, we either have single-family residential or flexible residential. Flexible residential is envisioned to be either R2, R3, or a planned development, so the higher-density type of residential developments. And this entire site is indicated in the future land use as a flexible residential. One other issue I just want to point out is, kind of going back to the multiple designations, is we do look at making sure that this rezoning would correct any inequitable situations created in the city. So the current zoning, zoning, current multiple zoning designations for the property, it creates a partially inequitable situation, mainly because by having multiple zoning designations on one property, the development of the site would be more problematic, especially given the size of the commercial zoning designations, multiple commercial designations, fronting on the Cherry Hill side, they're relatively small compared to modern needs for commercial development. So we believe by having one zoning designation would, would correct that partially inequitable situation. I will point out that in your packet, the applicant did provide a draft site plan for the site. They would intend to develop the site for a multi-story apartment building, but since this is the rezoning, and they're the first step in the process, you, and this is a standard rezoning, you have to consider the whole host of uses which would be considered within a multiple-family district. So those, given that it's multifamily residential, it is, you know, some type of either town homes, or are attached, single-family, or apartment buildings, as pointed out, or even other things like religious institutions, that sort of thing. So in the end, we do believe the requested rezoning would result in the entire property being zoned to multiple-family residential, and that would be consistent with the city's master plan. So we would advise the planning commission to recommend to city council to adopt the proposed R3 rezoning, based on the points I've outlined this evening. So I will be able to answer any questions now, or at, at another time?
Maybe we can come back to that later on. If you're done, then, is the applicant here tonight? Would you care to step up and make your presentation, sir?
Good evening.
Is that?
Yeah, it's got the green light on it.
Okay, it's on, I guess. Just have to speak up a little.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Ali Kalaf. I'm the responsible of this project on Cherry Hill and Arcola Street, the corner of Cherry Hill and Arcola Street. I'm the designer of this project, and I'm here on behalf of the engineer Ziad Al Baba, as is, as is mentioned here, and the owner BS Properties Management. And today, we are, as the city planner presented before me, we are proposing to rezone the two corners of the, of the site, the C1 and C3, to rezone it to be R3 for, for multi-, multiple-family residence. Yeah, and we are, as you can see in your set in front of you, we have, we are proposing apartment building, three-story apartment building, which is including 15 apartment.
Is there anything else you'd like to say about your proposal, or?
I think the city planner explained everything about what we are trying to do, and everything we were trying to do, yeah, the zoning.
Okay, good. Well, if you want to take a seat, then, if we have any questions, we may get back to you later on.
Yeah.
And right now, we'll open the public hearing. You can sit down if you would.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at 6:43. Open it to public comments and questions. Is anyone here who wishes to make a comment or have a question about the proposal? Seeing no one, I'll ask again. Anyone care to get up and make a comment, or have a question about the proposal? Secretary, do we have any written comments or questions?
Nope, we didn't receive any written communications.
Then we'll close the public hearing at 6:45. And move on to the commission's discussion and recommendations. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
Right, just.
Yes.
So we're talking about a brand-new building on the existing all the way down, is that what we're, we're going to do? The R3 is, isn't there an existing apartment building there now? Existing structure? That's going to come down, and the whole thing's going to go up brand-new, is that what I'm hearing?
This is all on the current vacant property, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, it doesn't, doesn't extend into what's already been built.
Okay.
Now, I was just going to ask a point of clarification, so today, we're being asked to approve just the rezoning, not the site plan.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I have one question, though. Since, since they did present a site plan, has, have you looked at the site plan to make sure that it meets the basic requirements such as setbacks?
Well, that's the issue. When we get to site plan review, there are several issues that they're facing with regards to that size of a development, most notably being setbacks. They do have to have a setback from the commercial property, and at some point, whether, it's one of those issues where the commercial property came first, there is a fence there, but it's a stockade fence. So with regards to providing a masonry wall or not, that'll be an issue that's going to have to be determined at site plan, the setback is going to be an issue. And then also, other things like the building height, technically, within the R3, you're allowed two and a half stories, or 25 feet. That's typically because with a three-story building, normally, you actually would be required to install an elevator. So that's why we normally have it as there. So I have had preliminary discussions with the applicant regarding revisions to the site plan to address these issues, and so they're prepared to present a revised site plan. You know, they, they came, first came to the building department with this set of plans, and so I went over the site plan issues, and I also presented to him the, the issue that he will need first, this rezoning, to in order to move forward. So.
Yeah, I, you know, since, since one of the criteria is number eight here, could all the requirements of the proposed zoning classification be complied with? And I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, if, if we would be asked to approve a rezon-, or recommend a rezoning for a proposal that doesn't meet the criteria?
So the issue there would be that while the applicant may want to develop the property in this site, there's other viable ways to develop the site in the multifamily in complete compliance with the district. Now, whether they have to attempt to exceed those requirements, and for example, ask for variance, that would be up to the, to the applicant. But technically, right now, the site could be developed for multifamily in complete compliance with the ordinance. The easiest way you can consider that is just look to the properties to the north. The property to the north is a single-story multifamily building. I believe there's, I think there's four units in that one, and there's the ability to have enough parking, and to have enough landscaping and the screening to fit on a site. So it'll just be up to the applicant, when they eventually come and present your site plan, to determine if they want to, how much they want to, they're going to be complying with the ordinance. But there is, there is a way to viable develop of the site with, in complete compliance with the ordinance.
So, sir, you are avail-, aware of the, the problems associated with your, your current site plan in this rezoning request? And you're considering modifications that would bring it into compliance? Okay.
For example, they have talked to me about, they apparently had no issue with lowering it to the two and a half story requirement, mainly because they would forego the elevator costs. So costs associated to, to go down the six or eight feet to create garden apartments is very comparable to, or more cost-effective, say, than installing the elevator. So those type of discussions their design team needs to have. I will say that one of the issues they, they feel is not as pressing is that setback from the commercial, but that's a discussion we'll have to have with them at site plan.
All right, well, we're being requested to recommend rezoning of this property. This property is currently one piece of property, though it has been combined from the previous status when it was several pieces, but the zoning was never.
That is correct.
Changed to reflect the fact that it's one piece of property.
That's correct.
Okay. Any more comments or questions?
Just one question from Mario, and the, the recommendation for the R3, I mean, and I'll admit, I'm not necessarily the expert on all the zones yet, would you say that R3 is the best option for this use? And is there another option that gives the city more flexibility with the long-term plan?
I would think R3 is, mainly because it's also fronting on Cherry Hill, so that's a pretty high-volume corridor, the way they have it designed, you know, they have solid walls along Cherry Hill, and while we do have single-family homes located along Cherry Hill, further west, you know, it's not necessarily the most advantageous for a single-family, or like even a, a two-family attached in that close proximity to the intersection with Inkster Road and Cherry Hill Road. So just because of the volume and the size, and the adjacent, you know, with the drive through right next to the building, you know, I don't know if anybody would really want to have like an open yard next to that. So it does seem to be the most, and it would be the most cost-effect, or have the most ability to get approved quickly, say, if they wanted to do a planned unit development. They would need the R3 multi-family development anyway, before they wanted to, in order to get the density, I think, that they're shooting for, so.
Is there any further comment or discussion? Not? Does someone care to make a motion for recommendations?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to city council to approve the proposed rezoning from, from the site, from a C1 and C3 to an R3.
I'll support.
Motion's made and supported. Any comments on the motion? Hearing none, would you take your role, please?
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Okay, the, your next step, of course, will be to go before the city council, because they have final say on whether the zoning change is actually made or not, we just simply make a recommendation. And ours, of course, is for them to go ahead with the change, but it's up to them at this point. If you talk to Brian or Mr. Ortega, they'll let you know when it will be coming up on a council meeting. Okay, moving on. The next item is request for rezoning of the lot at the northwest corner of Pardo and Ron Avenue, more commonly known as 33111 Ford Road, from R1, single-family residential, to conditional C1 local business. And we're about to have a public hearing on that. Mr. Ortega, would you start us off, please?
Yes. With regards to this particular request, the site itself is the 0.4 acre lot with the existing one-story structure that was previously operated as a religious institution. So the lot that's located at that northwest corner of Pardo and Rain. So the landowner actually also owns the adjacent lot to the north, and utilized that lot as the off-street parking lot for the, for the previous New Life Church. So the parking lot itself is zoned C1 local business, and then the lot with the vacant building is zoned R1, single-family. So the applicant is proposing to conditionally rezone the church lot to a C1 local business with the restriction that the building shall only be used as a multi-tenant office building. So you have my letter with my total comments, I'm just going to point out some highlights. Number one, just to, since we're not, this, this request somewhat differs from the previous, because this is a conditional rezoning. And a conditional rezoning actually is another tool within the zoning ordinance in which, and also within the, the state zoning enabling act, that allows a community to attempt to also meet the intent of a zoning ordinance by looking at ways to make sure uses are compatible with each other. So as mentioned, in a standard rezoning, you have to consider the entire list of uses that would be allowed in the new zoning district compared to the current zoning district. With a conditional rezoning, the applicant has voluntarily proposed a set of restrictions on the use of the site in order to achieve compatibility with adjacent uses. So rather than be giving the right to develop the site for any listed use as permitted, or a special use within the C1 district, the applicant may only use a site for uses that are listed within a conditional rezoning agreement. Other aspects with regard to conditional rezoning is the fact that if this site were ever just stopped to be used as a office building, it would automatically revert back to R1. So it would not be allowed to continue as any other use than the office use. And as I mentioned, if it ever becomes vacant for more than six months, then it does revert automatically back to their single-family residential district. Other aspect of this is that a conditional rezoning is actually an agreement between the city and the property owner. There will eventually be drafted a conditional rezoning agreement that gets signed by both parties, that outlines the conditions, and it outlines the aspects of reversion back to R1, and gets, it's signed by both parties, and then it gets recorded at the county. So it's something that is, becomes official, and legally binding, and runs with the land. So even if the property owner, the property owner could sell it later on, but that future property owner is still beholden to the conditional rezoning. So I've mentioned this conditional rezoning as a way to promote compatibility between uses when full rezoning would not do so. So one, one aspect, the main aspect to that is that if they were going to go for a straight standard C1 rezoning, you know, there are a lot of uses that, within this rezoning of C1, that could be developed, mainly as a retail store, personal service use, such as a dry cleaner, beauty parlor, a bank with a drive-through even. So retail and personal, these retail uses and personal uses, personal service uses, excuse me, you know, they have extended hours of operation from time to time, they can generate a high level of traffic, especially if the businesses becomes extremely popular. However, if the site is restricted to only office uses, you know, their client, they typically don't generate as much uses as a retail or a service, because they're mainly either the office workers visiting the site, or they're the, the clients. And those are usually a one-on-one relationship, you don't have like a retail floor area, you have multiple people in this, in the, in the building, and only a few workers. It's usually a, it's a one-on-one relationship. So we believe that the characteristics of an office use would be compatible with the adjacent property in the area, while the retail and service uses have, that, under a standard rezoning, would not be compatible. So as proposed, this conditional rezoning, we do think could work in this particular instance. Other things we look at, of course, is the master plan, to make sure that we meet the intent of the, and the goals of the master plan. And one item that's pointed out in the goals and intent of the master plan is that a 15-year priority would be, from residents, was to make sure to occupy any vacant retail spaces. The master plan wanted to make sure that we could address as many and limit the amount of, and extent of vacancies as possible. So the site has been vacant for many months, reoccupancy of the building would now require, right now, under the current zoning of R1, would require a reuse of the property for permitted uses in that district, so such as, single, it would have to be used as a single-family residence, as a school, a religious institution, or a community building. So the conditional rezoning would allow for more immediate reoccupancy of the building, and eliminate a potentially prolonged vacancy in that building. I have fielded and talked to various people that were interested in the building, their uses varied from like a museum, some people have. Some people have thought about putting in a church there, but for one reason or another that it didn't work. I'm not sure why, and I wasn't sure, maybe it's because of cost, but that didn't work either. So while there have been attempts, no one has yet attempted this type of use in terms of, and therefore then eliminating the vacancy of the building. One other thing I wanted to point out from my letter is that whether this rezoning would be consistent with the surrounding zoning classifications. So the proposed site, the proposed rezoning, we do, we do think would be compatible with the property rezoning, with existing zoning to the north. To the north, properties front on Ford Road, they're zoned commercial. So they, we do believe that this rezoning would, can be compatible with those. And there are also several other sites along Ford Road that extend beyond that half-block, beyond the alley, closer into Pardo. About two or three doors down, you have the vacant VFW that has the, while the building is in front, the parking is, does extend all the way to Pardo. A little bit further down, it's not as close, but is the Chinese restaurant that does extend beyond that distance, is on the south side of Ford, on that over there. So we do believe by, by conditionally rezoning this and limiting the use to only office, it would be consistent with the other zoning in the area. And then finally, whether this, as discussed earlier with other rezoning, whether this site would be, be capable of meeting all the zoning classifications on the subject parcel. So when, with this building, combined with the parking to the north, the, we do believe it can comply with all our zoning requirements. The existing building currently does comply with the dimensional and setback requirements for the C1 district. And then the use of the adjacent site for the off-street parking will allow the building to comply with the parking standards while not impacting any adjacent property in the residential neighborhood. So that site, I actually already did the calculations. If the site was developed for completely built out as a office building, all the office workers and clients would be capable of being serviced by that parking lot to the north. So the site would be capable of being used and not impacting the adjacent neighborhood. So in the end, we would recommend, we do believe that this rezoning of the vacant building to a conditional C1 strictly only for office would allow for the immediate reoccupancy of the vacant structure and be compatible with the adjacent uses. So we advise the planning commission to recommend to City Council the approval of the proposed rezoning from the R1 to the conditional C1 with that specific restriction that it shall only be used as a multi-tenant office, based on the six items that I've outlined in my letter. With that, I can take your questions.
Well, why don't we hold off on questions again, and we'll, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you care to come up and make your presentation, sir?
Thank you. My name is Abbas Rostam. I'm an accountant and owner of Accounting Strategies. My office, my tax and accounting office, still take, has a better job than me, but I just wanted to add the multi-office use is definitely, this is probably the terminology that's used in the city. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying just to move my firm from 4.7 miles away. I'm already on Ford Road. I've been there for, since 2014 in this location, and I love the building, and all I'm trying to do is to move my office, my accounting office, that building. The building is a little bit bigger than I want, but I still have to occupy more than half of it for loan purposes as well, because I have to be in owner occupied. I'm applying for the multi-office use or whatever the name is, just because in case I can find another tenant to help me with the thing, and it's going to be kind of like similar kind of service that I provide, like, I don't know, like mortgage insurance or real estate office, which doesn't impact the flux of cars or bring more traffic, especially after the pandemic. Our offices are mostly working without client coming in as much as they used before, so we do everything online or whatever. So we have 31 parking spots right now, and I think this is like far more than what we need, and hopefully it will happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a definition of those kind of uses that would be qualified for office?
Well, within the zoning ordinance, there's really only two distinctions. One, either a professional office, or one, a medical office, medical dental office. Usually the distinctions are only made when it comes to parking, because they're, for both types of offices, they do require one parking space for every 300 square foot of usable floor area. And then the medical office, in addition to that, requires one parking space for every employee on the maximum shift. Doing the calculations, based on the size of the building, the ordinance would require at most 15 parking spaces. So for an accounting firm, it would be only for, they would only be required to have 15 parking spaces. They do have 31. And then if, as that owner mentioned, if he for some reason needs to find a tenant to help build out, to fill in the rest of the 40% or whatever, the rest of the floor area, they would have to file for a certificate of occupancy. I would have to determine, make sure they provide all the information on a number, like say it was a doctor's office, they would have to indicate that their total number of employees would still comply with the remaining, what is that, 16, 17 parking spaces. So they couldn't have that. But beyond that, Fred, there really is no other distinction in the ordinance. It's something-
Possibly, since we, we don't have any list of qualifying uses like we used to when we had an office determination, maybe this should include a list of qualifying uses that would be considered office.
One, one thing, just to let you know, that's kind of unique to this conditional rezoning is that technically, the city can't negotiate with the property owner because it's supposed to be voluntarily on his aspect, but you could definitely recommend that within the conditional rezoning agreement, a listing of the office types be included, and that's something that, you know, that would be drafted into the conditional rezoning agreement. I do think it's a good idea to let you know, within the zoning ordinance itself, an office is defined as a building or portion of a building wherein services are performed involving predominantly administrative, professional, or clerical operations. I know that's still kind of broad. It's not exactly-
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe that would-
It would help, but it wouldn't, I don't know if it would get that assurance you might be looking for.
Yeah.
But I definitely think you could at least recommend that a definition of the types of uses be proposed. And it would be up to the applicant to voluntarily indicate the type of use, office uses in there, whether it be, you know, accounting, architect, you know, how detailed they get, accounting, architect, real estate, mortgage, banking, you know, those type of professional office uses.
Yeah, possibly you could come up with a suggested list.
Yeah.
Along, not negotiating, but-
Correct.
To go along with our recommendation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that can definitely happen.
Okay. The other question I had was if the, the lot that has the parking and the lot where the building is should be combined into one parcel because one can't exist, or the building can't exist without parking.
You know, that's something, personally, I would like that to happen, just because I do believe that the, the properties that are needed to meet the compliance with the ordinance should be listed as one. Technically, our ordinance still utilizes what's called a zoning lot definition. So a zoning lot is a lot that is a single tax parcel or a combination of tax parcels under common ownership that meets the intent of the ordinance. So the idea there is that the separate, that the individual lots can't be sold off because they're meeting the intent of the ordinance. And other, the way I've discussed this with, for example, the assessing department, is that they do feel like when a, a building straddles a property line, the city is within its rights to request that the properties be combined because it's, it's, you know, the building, half the building could be sold off if it wasn't, you know, if a close eye wasn't kept on the, on the property transfer records. However, when I've requested that the lot to be combined, when it's a vacant lot, and this, same thing in this case, where the parking's on one side, the lot, and the building's on the other, they tend to not necessarily require that of applicants, they, you know, more of a request. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know the legal standing we have with regards to requiring the combination.
Okay. All right, well, at this point, we'll open the public hearing, I guess. It's 7:12. I'd like to open the public hearing. Has anyone wished to comment or have come forward and make a statement or have a question about the request before us? I hear no one. I'll ask again. Does anyone wish to come forward and make a comment or have a question about the zoning request before us? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:13. Or first, I should ask the clerk if you have any written communications concerning this?
No, our officer, we did not receive any.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:13. And next, we'll open it to commission discussion. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I do have a question. On the map, there's, so it's 33111 Ford Road. Is it, does it also have a Pardo address of this 33124?
No, that's why in the letter, I mean, in the agenda, I called it more commonly known as. The entire site, the combination of the parking lot and the building is called 3311, though technically there are two separate parcel ID numbers.
Okay.
That one parcel you're looking at, the one with the, with the building on it, actually doesn't have an address. That, well, its address is 33111.
Okay.
I should say, and that's what I, excuse me. Yeah, its address is 33111.
Okay, so it's the Pardo address.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I had just one question regarding memorializing this kind of special. So you'd mentioned something about, I think, to the county, but just thinking to the future of our conversations around this piece of land, how would we know that this is, it's a C1, but it's really an R1? And there's this, and all the special conditions that we're accommodating.
Yeah. So on the zoning map, if you, there are actually two other parcels in, excuse me, lots in the city right now that are conditionally rezoned. One is actually on Ford Road, a little bit to the east. I believe it's an auto oil change place. And on the zoning map, there's a hash mark on the zoning map. It says, and a label that says conditional C3. And then the other one is down on Cherry Hill. The, it's a childcare center, and that was rezoned back in 2011 to conditional C1. It was originally single-family, but it was conditionally rezoned to C1 to allow for the childcare. And the same thing, it's a hash mark on the site. Currently, one other tool we have right now to make sure that's memorialized, if you will, is we have our BSNA system in which the, this, this review is being, you know, inputted into there. We might, I can always, and there's some zoning tools that we can put in there to make sure it's, but yeah, it's important to, to make sure that it's restricted, and then especially given the fact that it could revert, you know, some point in the future back to R1.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question. So what, what is the, I know we were talking about, it was up to the property owner to disclose what the business was going to be, but what is the, what do we know that will guarantee that this is not going to turn to a retail or be sold off, like Fred suggested, where the front half goes commercial, walk-in, retail? And then the back becomes what? We don't, we changed it to C3, so what's going to keep that from being separated and sold as a commercial site in the middle of a residential neighborhood?
That would be the conditional rezoning agreement, because it would be a legally binding agreement on the property owner. And there are, within the zoning ordinance, there are specific requirements that have to be listed in, in that agreement, and it will be, and it will be signed and recorded at the county, and so that document is actually going to be legally binding on the applicant. So they can only use it for, for, for C1 as an office, and if that's in violation, then he's, then they're, if any retail use, any service use, a hairdryer store opens up, or something that is not, that the, that the property owner has indicated in that document, then he would be in violation of that, and the city can take corrective actions to make sure that doesn't get occupied as anything other than an office.
The conditional rezoning is only for the back property, though it doesn't apply to the parking lot area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Because the front, the parking lot has already zoned R1, uh, C1, excuse me. So the parking lot itself is own, zoned C1. And the, and the issue would be there if they attempted to, like, say, develop that with a building or any type of commercial use. You know, it would have to be something that would still allow the parking for the office building, and the parking for the use, and the footprint for another building. And, you know, I would think it would be very difficult for that to happen on that site unless it was some type of cantilevered parking deck situation. It's a big lot, but it's not that big.
Yeah, it doesn't seem big enough to have another use on it.
No.
Any other comments or questions? Well, we'll entertain a motion. I would like to see the motion include the recommendation that a list of uses be included along with the conditional rezoning. But again, that's a recommendation.
I'll make a motion. A motion to recommend approval to the City Council for the request for rezoning of the lot at the northwest corner of Pardo and Ron Avenue, more commonly known as 33111 Ford Road, from R1, single-family residential, to conditional C1, inclusive of the recommended use cases for that lot.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any comments or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, would you take your role?
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye. Okay, sir, your recommendation is approved. It goes to the City Council now for their final approval. And if you get ahold of Mr. Ortega, he'll let you know when that will be occurring.
That's the other thing, he's doing his due diligence. He hasn't purchased the site yet. He's, it's an option, so it's always good when someone isn't trying to do something after the fact.
Okay, other business or discussion? We had a motion table that was supposed to come up tonight, but I understand there's been some discussion about it.
Yes, this is regards to the outdoor storage use on, on, on the industrial district?
Yes.
On block?
Yes. On block.
Block.
On block street. So after, after the meeting, I had further discussions with the- So after, after the meeting, I had further discussions with the property owner and with, most importantly, with his engineer, his civil engineer, regarding the requirement that the site will have to deal with stormwater in compliance with Wayne County requirements. So that was a main issue that he had to deal with and his team had to deal with. Luckily, his civil engineer had extensive experience with Wayne County and, and also advised him accordingly as that he will have to comply with their standards, which depending, it all depends on what they propose for the surface, and then how ordinances require, you know, how much volume gets stored, how mu, you know, whether they can tap, whether they can discharge into that drain or not, and that sort of thing. So the property owner was considering, given that, you know, he, he didn't feel like he wanted to push the ideas of interpreting anything of the zoning ordinance yet, because he felt it's going to be, he wanted to do the economic analysis of figuring if he could even afford to construct a, a stormwater detention, given his business model. I will say that after that, after that evening, he did come in, he was entered to the building department asking, trying to get a certificate of occupancy for just an internal storage within the building. That was, that process started, however, during that process, discussions were held with the code enforcement department and regarding, you know, how he could move forward, because there still exist on that site asphalt millings that were, that were put illegally. So the applicant is going to have to address that issue, and most likely either complete construction of it, compliance with engineering requirements, or possibly remove the millings. But that's something that's going to be, he's going to have to deal with prior to even occupying the interior of the building, because we can't allow him to move forward until that issue is addressed.
Currently doesn't have a certificate of occupancy, is that correct?
Yeah, there's no certificate of occupancy, even for that, that paving company that was operating there, they were not, they did not have a CFO to be on the site, so.
Yeah.
And they certainly didn't have permission to millings as ground asphalt.
Yeah.
So it's spread down, you drive over it-
Just packed it down.
It becomes compacted.
Exactly.
You know, so.
And I, I really looked through our, our ordinances, and I couldn't find any separate description of what parking would look like for a storage yard. So I, I don't have much faith in getting anywhere with that argument, I guess.
No, and actually, one thing that I did when I looked through my, again, through the ordinance, the only issue, the only reference to any type of storage facility that would be comparable, and actually would be of a higher use, or you would think would be less restrictive, would be junkyards. We do have a junkyard special use requirement, and even those require them to be fully paved. So if, if a junkyard is required to be fully paved-
Yeah.
How could storage of someone's RV or boat not be on a hard surface?
The only thing I found was a definition that talked about storage of construction equipment.
Yes.
And that didn't go any farther than that.
No.
They, they didn't have any description of what that would look like, so.
It is a conundrum, because obviously residents do have a lot of recreational vehicles in the city, and they would, some of their lots can't accommodate-
That's right.
-storage of them, so it would be convenient to have somewhere in the city to store them. However, you know, this, I guess the business model doesn't necessarily comprehend, you know, being in an urban environment where it should be paved, and it should, you got to deal with the rainwater. We have flooding issues as it is. Last thing we need is to have two acres of asphalt dumped straight into a drain.
That's a big no-no to, in this world, because, you know, they, they just did all that, I worked down in Dearborn, and they just did all that along the Rouge, behind Greenfield Village, and behind our powerhouse. That's all separated now. Huge concrete, concrete retention areas, I mean-
Oh, yeah, retention is a big deal now.
You don't just dump in the Rouge anymore. That little creek there, you know, that, that qualifies as, as a branch of, I'm sure.
Yeah, it eventually goes someplace.
Yeah.
Plus, plus, when you're talking about vehicles, so oil and gas, obviously, you have to deal with it for winterizing it, but chances are, they will be leaking, or, you know, at some point.
Never know.
Never know. I mean, not intentionally, of course, but-
No.
Vehicles do that, so.
Well, since we're not dealing with that issue, does that table item need to be acted on?
I don't, I'm a little rusty in my Robert's Rules of Order. I don't know if that can stay on the table forever, or if it needs to be removed, and I don't know, I think it can just stay tabled.
Everybody's looking at Brian. Brian's like, I ain't saying nothing.
So, so I believe it can stay tabled-
Okay, right.
If, if they want to come back and, and present it as it is, you know, as it was, but I'm thinking, you know, that if, if it's never taken off the table again, then it just remains out there-
It just stays there.
Do we put it on the next agenda?
In, in case they have to come back with a completely new, you know, new plan.
Well, we could do that. We could, we could probably bring it up now and, and make a decision too. But, I don't know, I think, I think, I think we, we can just leave it there for the time being.
Because any, any proposal he comes back to, I would have to determine whether it's a continuation of the existing, or whether it's been so long that it would have to be a new application. And chances are, you know, I don't know if he's going to be dealing with it anytime soon, because of course, he's going to be needing permits in order to effectively deal with asphalt millings anyway. So that's probably a more administrative thing anyway, so.
All right, commissioners, do we have any comments regarding planning and zoning matters?
I'm going.
No?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Just a quick question about the old K-Marts, anything?
Just that, Belly Fitness has officially decided they are not developing, and it's up for sale.
It's up for sale, I saw a for-sale sign in front.
Did you, I didn't see the sign. I just see all the brick around the bowling alley, Albert's.
Yeah, they're working.
Yeah.
Slowly, but working.
I'm sure, I see, we're, we're getting ready for a new facelift, so hopefully it gets going a little better than it's been.
Yeah.
COVID slowed everything down, but it's been two years.
Yeah, for sure. Because that was approved before everything was shut down.
Right. Those permits can't stay forever either, so.
Well, he-
It did start work, so.
And they've been doing a lot of work internally, so they did submit their building permits in time, so that their site plan and approvals were valid.
Okay.
Okay.
Brian?
No, nothing this evening.
Do you have anything else, then?
No, nothing.
Okay, then we'll have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.